Okay, everybody. Thank you, thank you. Right, so welcome, eighth of November, November already, it's only Christmas. Right, so welcome to tonight's Hexham Town Council. So our first item on the agenda is to hear questions from all residents. So if anybody from our gathering that perhaps would like to ask any questions, could they put their hand up and give me their name and their question please?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. My name is Catherine Dixon and I just moved into Hexham about two months here. I'm in a lovely two-listed building, I own a charity estate house, and I've been in Hexham for a long, yeah, and now excited to work in Hexham, in Hexham Hospital, and once in the marketplace here, where it used to be Red Sunstone, we're now just off the marketplace. So I know Hexham quite well. And I feel sort of moving into Hexham, and there's a lot of people bought lots of two-listed buildings and one-listed buildings, but I do feel as a tenant, in this really important council, anything just a matter, I feel sort of like the outside of the buildings of these properties, the landlords should bring them up to the state that they should be returned to. And they might be paying for the damp situation, or branches grown out of plaster or grass, and it really puts Hexham down because I feel Hexham at the moment is very sad. It doesn't look abundant and happy and what's happening, unless something's happening, but no. So that's my question tonight, that if the landlords could have a letter sent to them to say, you know, kind of look after these lovely properties and bring them back to what they were. As a tenant, I'm keeping the inside looking beautiful as it is, I love it. And but I just wish that the council could send the landlords in and around Hexham to bring their properties up to state. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks for that. Obviously, you know, it's a point to be raised about, you know, some properties nearly don't look as good as probably could. But I do think Hexham in part is amazing. So I don't think it's as down as he was. What you say, the goal on Beaumont Street, the R B, etc., there's some amazing places in Hexham. Some places do need, you know, no doubt. Well, I'll think about how to do that, whether letters is the right thing, because obviously we need to know which are listed buildings, which aren't, etc. And it is, you know, it's a landlord's property, not the ownership of the council. However, the sentiment is, you know, we agree with. So we'll have a think about how to do that, but the sentiment is, thank you. Right, another question.
It was understandable.
Could we have a name, please?
Where do you reach?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So many.
There was some understandable confusion in the debate last month about affordable housing. And questions raised about what is the definition of affordable housing and so forth. And this was in the context of what should be done with the Hexham Medical Site. Now there's now a school there. It's a very complicated issue, but I did just want to, since this got into the Koran, it's also onto Facebook pages, I did just want to correct the definition of affordable housing. If a developer, if a big developer personally borrows that kind of company property then and wanted to build a hundred houses on it, they would be asked to make a 10% contribution by building some affordable housing. The definition of that would be 80% of market value. So I don't think that's what we want on the Hexham Medical Site. I think we want the county council to be pressed to sell that site for what we call social value rather than best financial value, so that a community land trust or a housing association or the council itself could build what we call genuinely affordable housing. And that would be for rent generally, not 100%.
Good point. Okay, we will take that into consideration as we go forward with that. Thank you. And next question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, Barry Collins. I refer you back to a meeting in June 2018, where I brought up the subject, it will be went with toilets, which is quite a long time ago, and this various meetings has been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. And at the September meeting, I gave personally a copy of an email that I'd received from the county council dated two seconds ago, about another day, it was over a year ago, where they give an estimate of how much it would be to refurbish for financial year 2021. So 2021 is about defunct, and I was wondering if you would have any progress with the email and the copy of the email that I gave to you.
So thanks for that, Barry, and I do really thank you for your dogging this, in all of this, because you never give up, and that's what we need. Honestly, it is really important that people like you keep at us. I had another word with the, so the leader, I'd invited the leader of the county council to come to Hexham, we had a date, unfortunately that date was cancelled on his side. It was due for some Covid issues. I have asked him for another date, but I wouldn't chase him again if I didn't come and have that visit, because I do want him to see there's three key toilets, public toilets in Hexham that really fall below standard, the Seale, the Wentworth and at Tyndale. But we must recognise there is a couple of decent ones in that the Queen's Hall, which are public toilets, but not well advertised, and I think that is part of the problem, that that should be advertised, that that is a public facility. Plus also the ones at the bus station, which are also public ones. And I chased the bus station, the bus companies to make sure that they're opened as early as possible once the Covid situation stabilised, because they were shut for some time. And I sort of got contacted, I mean, I chased them off to make sure that those were open again. So that needs to be chased up, and I will pre-chase that.
I mean, after I mentioned about the Seale toilets, the doors being left open, I'd be wondering, the Wentworth, the doors left open, but the windows are all sealed and there's no draft, and the odor is rather a bit obnoxious in the room.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And we also had problems with the toilets at Tyndale, in that they were blocked for.
But as I say, there was an estimate given of the refurbishment cost, which was about £7,000, which said would be in this financial year, 2021, so maybe we could use that date to maybe to be someone younger.
Yeah. I've got a bit, I thought, certainly Bowland didn't seem an awful lot of money.
No, it doesn't. As I say, all the windows are sealed, you know, there's no true drafts in that.
No, they're not, they're not an encouraging site to visitors, I must say.
The second.
Yeah?
Right, the meeting, unfortunately I missed last month, I was tired. The meeting previously, when you talked about having the town made as a complete 20 mile an hour hair, I mean, I don't know what's involved in that, if there's possibly planning permission and things like that. People may be objecting, but I was wondering if some consideration could be done at the thoroughfare of the town, where there is small 20 mile an hour signs, but maybe if they could be illuminated somehow, or maybe made even bigger, might improve the situation with maybe the cost of illuminating. But I would think Hexham's worth considering as an interim while we're waiting yet to see if you can have a 20 mile an hour speed in the progress of the town.
Right, so I did write to the chief executive, well, actually, I spoke to the chief executive of the county, and then I wrote to, following that, I wrote to the head of planning about the 20 mile an hour, you know, to say, look, the town council is hugely enthusiastic to have a blanket 20 mile an hour on that. So he's currently drafting a report, and he's going to bring that report to us. So once we get that, we'll have a look to see what the pros and cons are. I don't think, personally, I wouldn't say lighting 20 mile an hour signs as a solution, I think.
I didn't, sorry, it didn't mean the great big things, you know, I just made the same diameter and illuminated.
Yeah, but I think, to me, it's more than that, and this is about behaviours of people, not about signs, it's about behaviours. And if anything, if we do get the blanket 20, I would hope to see less signs in the town rather than more, because I just think, once you know that you know everywhere in this town is 20, that you can actually start to reduce the amount of signs, because at the moment it's just a clutter. Certainly when you go toward the high school, you've got 20, there's part 20s, you know, it's just messy. And certainly, I was, actually, it's brought some interest from ITV News, who kept saying soon after this council meeting, and they contacted me, and they did a big, they did a five minute talk on the ITV news, about the 20 mile an hour, so they were quite interested in it as well. So I found that really positive as well.
Right, thank you very much.
Very good, sir, thank you. Good, and we missed you last month there, Barry.
No. I was rambling, I watched you obviously.
Very good. Okay, item two, apologies for absence.
Councilors, Paul, Frances, Wood.
Thank you. Three declarations of interest. None, right. Item four, to agree the minutes of our last meeting on 11 October. Are we content with that being the true record, right, as same rules? Anybody want to raise any items? Does anybody want to raise the item about the flood resilience at all? And we want to get a contact. About volunteering? No, because we were expecting something from about volunteering as flood workers, weren't we? Was that something, we haven't received that, have we? Anything else? No, okay. So matters arising, not on the agenda. Any? I think that was just covered there. Right, now we are going to receive a presentation from our friends from Hexham Foundation. Unfortunately, Bruce is unable to attend tonight, Bruce Howard, because of, I think he's Covid, she thinks that, so I'm going to pass up to these ladies.
You've got the B team.
You've got the B team. We're going to pass up to these ladies, and you can introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Okay?
Yes.
Right, thank you ever so much for having us. I'm Jo Elliott, and this is my colleague, do you want to say who you are?
Nikki.
And thanks up so much. I'm assuming nobody knows anything about Hexham Foundation. Apologies if you do know bits, but it's easier to assume everyone doesn't know anything as we're starting off. My role, and I'm very new in post, but what really appealed to me from the Hexham point of view was how unique an organisation it is, and I don't know if you realise how unique we are and how lucky Hexham are actually to have something so unique. And what really attracted me was the impact that Hexham has in a small way, but quite huge to the individuals that get involved in tackling inequalities. We offer working experience through volunteering to those with either learning disabilities or mental health needs, who really wouldn't get that opportunity unless we offered it. So it is a very, very unique opportunity, and we offer that to individuals within proper businesses. We have, we're contracted to provide services, and we have customers who pay good money for our services. So it's a really unique offer to those individuals. And what we wanted to start out with was just explaining a little bit of the impact to our volunteer beneficiaries, and I've got a whole list here, I think, or we've got photo, oh, here we are. Their impact. We think work's actually really good, and our volunteers get the opportunity to get that structure of work, increasing their self-esteem, their self-confidence, developing new skills, which could be from something as relatively simple, counting the number of Christmas cards you pack up for our Christmas card distributing packaging business. It could be something as complicated as using the coffee machine in the tans, cooking, baking, all sorts of skills that our beneficiaries will develop. It helps reduce social isolation, as you know, when you're in a group of people, immediately you feel connected, and that happens with our, the individuals that come along to us. And it really does help improve mental and physical health. And I think one thing really dear to my heart is the helping people to move into paid work or else move into other opportunities, because they just feel a lot more confidence. One of the very first tasks I had to do when I started was an exit interview with someone, and it was a dream, a young lady had been volunteering at the tans, not very long, perhaps a couple of years, she'd got into paid work, into a cafe, through the skills she'd learnt with us, not just the practical skills, the coffee machine, dishwasher, but those skills to be able to market yourself in an interview, to have the confidence to actually apply for paid work, and that was just so delightful to talk to her. And that was just such a lovely interview that I had. So I'm going to hand you over to Nikki.
Thanks, Jo. So I'm going to start with talking a little bit about the background to how Hexham came about. It was started 15 years ago by Chris Milner, whom I'm sure many people here know. And it was originally set up to support people with, specifically with learning disabilities. Chris was very aware that when people with learning disabilities transitioned into adulthood from their security of their special college, the special school, whatever, it was quite a difficult, it can be a very trying and difficult time, and he wanted there to be something that people with learning disabilities, adults, could take part in, that was good for them and covered all those impact statements that Jo's just been through. You know, work is good, so why can't they take part in that as well? And since then, we've offered over 90,000 hours of supportive work placements, and that's supported over 200 individuals from the Hexham Tyndale sort of area. They all do come to us as volunteers. If we paid them, we would have to pay them the minimum wage, and we would not be economically sustainable if we did that, and we'd curtail the opportunities we could offer our beneficiaries. People come to us for other benefits, such as improving their self-esteem, confidence, the social skills and things like that, that Jo covered earlier. Let's have a little canter around some of the businesses, the businesses that we run. Green Box is a postal packing business that is how Hexham started 15 years ago. And we do mail shops, the companies, organisations, such as the local NHS trust, various other charities, things like that. And although you could argue sending out mail shops is a bit of a dying trade, a lot of people are moving off to, over to email for sending these letters, we're very keen to keep this service going. The reason being, it is somewhere where we can place those beneficiaries whose support needs are perhaps greater than they would struggle perhaps to work in the cafe or something like that. We can sit them in Green Box, sit side by side with them, give them a lot of one-to-one support so that they can get that job done. So Green Box is something we're very keen to keep hold of. The tans, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the tans and its scones. We took over the tans in 2016, and it was at this point, we took, we started working with people with mental health needs as well as learning disabilities, because that's how the tans cafe used to operate when it was run by the NHS. So that was a new way of operating for us and a new beneficiary group. Often there is a lot of overlap between the learning disability group and the mental health group. Our beneficiaries can work either front of house, serving the customers, or in the kitchen, depending what they would prefer to do. At the cafe, we also have some meeting rooms upstairs that are for hire, and local groups often use them, small, but only you see maybe six to 10 people or something like that. We also have fundraising nights, quiz nights, things like that, and we're very proud of our trip adviser reviews that we've been having. Next up is catering. We also have a catering section down at our Giles Gate offices underneath Core Music. Here we prepare buffets for customers, maybe a local company that's having a training day, that sort of thing. And we also have a lunch club, where our beneficiaries prepare the meal for other beneficiaries who are invited to come in for their lunch, even if it's a day they're not working with us. And I don't know how many of you have ever worked in a job where at half past 12, they say, your lunch is on the table, come and get it, and we all sit down together with the beneficiaries, and we all eat together, and it's great, and that helps them nourish their Hexham friendships and helps with the social isolation that we feel is a very important part of our whole package. Also, it's, for people who are interested in improving their catering skills, but perhaps haven't got the confidence yet to cope with the pressure of the cafe, serving customers in a fairly more high-pressure environment, the catering section is a very good place for them to start, and they can, and many of them do indeed, progress up to the cafe after that. Gardening, next. We have a small operation in Newcastle where we work with schools, community centres, often doing quite large projects. For instance, there was a school where we set up a nursery, in a nursery section of the school, a storied garden, and our team designed it, built it, and carried on helping to maintain it as well. And this is part of the team working on the willow structure in a school in Newcastle as well. And in Hexham, we mainly have domestic customers, and we are very keen to expand this bit of the business. We know the domestic customers are there, and we're trying to get all our ducks in a row, a new van, we have to repeat the sets of tools and equipment that we have, staffing and all the rest of it, so that we can expand that domestic side of the gardening business. Because if we can expand our businesses, it makes us more sustainable in the future and less reliant on grant funding. We also have a warehouse down at Giles Gate, where we run a distribution and storage facility for various customers, and other customers just use this to store their various stock or whatever it happens to be as well. Moving on to talk briefly about our business model. We're very much a blend of charity and social enterprise, and anything that we make gets ploughed back into the foundation. We are funded either by our own trading income, but also by grant funding as well. That's a very important part of our income stream. We usually expect 75% of our income to come from our trading revenue, from our businesses, and the remaining 25% would come from grant funding, including Hexham Town Council. We've had some generous grants from the town council over the past. Because of the effects of Covid, because we had to close some of our businesses during the lockdowns, that dropped, that has fallen to 45% trading revenue, 55% from grants. And it is inevitably going to take us some time to get back to our pre-pandemic trading levels and hopefully to exceed that, but that is what the aim is. In summary. I must say, are you going to say something now?
I was going to say something.
Well, why don't you say, you say your other thing now, Jo, and then I'll sum up.
Very, very quick, you may think, well, where do all these people come from that come in and volunteer with us? People can give us a ring and ask more. We get official referrals from special schools, from community mental health team, GP practices. But it could be a parent who's worried about one of their children that, you know, needs a bit of support, might really benefit from this. It could be any individual, because we all have mental health needs. We don't ask for a diagnosis of, so it could be someone, you know, struggling with anxiety, depression. It could be someone with a long-term mental health, you know, something like schizophrenia, bipolar. We don't judge, we just talk to whoever comes forward, and then we'll work with them, we'll offer them a taster session, and it's about us trying to fit in with what we offer to how they are, not the other way around, and that's often the problem with work experience. It's often a take it or leave it, whereas we will try and work with the individuals and their families or their carers to try and make it fit for them rather than the other way around. And that's, I've got one of the best jobs in the world really, because that's what I do. I meet up with the individuals, and we try and see if we can help them through their journey. And they may stay with us for a long time, they may not, depending on what their needs are. So there's loads of detail, but I'm not going to bore you with the detail.
Thank you. Yep, really, just to summarise, we think of ourselves very much of a virtuous circle of mutual help. So customers come to us, pay for our services, which our beneficiaries provide to them, and that in turn supports our beneficiaries because of the impact it has on their self-esteem, confidence, gaining new skills and things like that. Hopefully, we offer an excellent service to our customers so that they come back, and that makes us more sustainable for the future. How can we work with Hexham Town Council? I've mentioned the funding we've already had from you guys already, and that's been, made a huge difference to us. There's perhaps a profile raising world as well. I saw the email that the mayor sent out this morning about the volunteer hub, and I know you've been busy on today registering for that, haven't you? Perhaps we can provide services for the town council, buffets for meetings, something from our gardening enterprise as well. I talked a little bit about some of the projects that we've been involved in in schools, and I think there's probably quite a lot of crossover in some of the work that Hexham Town Council's doing as well. But I think it's also, Hexham Town Council, you put a lot of store on your community engagement, and the learning disabled community and the mental health community in Hexham is very, very strong, and it is a really important part of the whole of Hexham's community. And I've just finished with this slide here, which is from our, we had a welcome back barbecue at Tyndale Sports Cup on Easgate last month, and it was an absolutely brilliant affair. We all got together the first time post-pandemic, and as we left, one of the carers who came to pick up the person he was looking after said, thank you, that's great, that's the happiest I've seen him for months, thank you so much. So, thank you, unless anybody has any questions?
Yes, we shall, thank you for that, we're going to be all around applause. So this is something very close to my heart, you know, Hexham and the facility gateway and the other facilities in the town, so it's just probably all personal circumstances. So I'm going to throw all them any questions, so it's in.
Mine's not so much a question for you guys as it is for the council and a bit of a general statement as well. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I'm really, really glad that you're able to come tonight. As many of you know, I have been meeting with Bruce Howard prior to now to discuss ways that your gardening enterprise can actually support the town council as well, particularly with Hexham Bloom's golden diamond, usually, isn't it, next year for the Queen's. So yes, we've been discussing ways in which we may be able to use the gardening section to help maintain the planting and to teach some new skills as well with planning and planting. to all beneficiaries and I'm really, really excited.
That would be great, a project like that would be.
It will be awesome. So I'm going to encourage the rest of the town council to give some funding. That just so that we can pay the supervisors and they'll be able to bring a lot of memories, teach them some new skills and give them some really valuable work experience.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Anyone else? Any questions? All right.
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. It's been really interesting. On some of our sake, store in many places in the next month, I might get some house space back. And I enjoy the coffee and the vegetarian food at the TANS. One question I had that I've always wondered about is the work placement situation that these beneficiaries are in, don't you have? How does that, how does that work? How do they get paid or do they get, they don't get paid?
They come to us as volunteers.
Yeah.
They would come, most of them particularly from the learning disabled community will come with their, I'm not an expert on the benefits and things that they get, would come with their, with their benefits. They don't pay to come to us, which is a bit of a USP, I guess, of ours because a lot of places, people would be expected to pay to go to that sort of thing. But we don't take that payment, it comes from our customers effectively and some of the grant funding that we get as well. But as I sort of mentioned earlier, if we did pay them, it would have to be the minimum wage. We couldn't pay them any less than that and we wouldn't be economically, we wouldn't be able to fund that.
You're right, it is confusing because we talk about work experience and then we say they're volunteers. So it doesn't quite, it doesn't make sense. But we do, because we provide proper work experience, experience of being at work, I think that's where the confusion lies and it is, it does, yeah. Which is why it's always really good to explain it. And yes, we would love to pay everyone but unfortunately we just wouldn't exist if we did. So it's unfortunate really, but yeah.
Yeah, well, I suppose if they have got a package behind them, then I suppose that makes sense.
Yes, yes, certainly for the people with the learning disabilities. How the people come with mental health problems, I'm not the expert, I'm not an institution.
I suppose you just have to look in terms of the benefits, the benefits of getting that experience and the skills will hopefully then help people to get paid employment. And that's, you know, we're not making people stay with us. We love it when people can go and get paid employment, that's fantastic. We would, you know, support them every step of the way.
I was just going to add about that, I've got in my notes here that Bruce said it's about ten to twelve thousand hours per year that we have to pay for, which is.
Yes, multiply that by the minimum wage, it's, yes. And if we pay them the minimum wage, that has an impact on the benefits that they, they may claim again, yeah.
Hi, I'm Chip. I'm working in mental health as well and I just want to acknowledge just how important and how welcome it is for me, this is putting my hat on really, but just to hear that you don't ask for diagnoses and things from mental health. So important and rare. So it's really lovely to hear that.
Yeah, good to know.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to go to our next speaker, who's Julia Ferguson, who was the chief executive of Gateway in the community, which is based back streets behind the Queen's Hall.
Sounds a little bit of a rugby stand, I'm still starting out. I've got kind of a little bit of an old fashioned display here, it's probably hard for everyone to see.
Very, very beautiful.
Yes, how come Gateway's with the community? I don't know how many people know of early Gateway. We were set up in nineteen ninety-eight and originally we were set up as a befriending scheme for people with brain disabilities, I feel next on to who was my predecessor. But we, after working, we still kind of wrote out that actually what our members, we call our members, wanted was a place to go to, like a place in the community where they felt they belonged, rather than kind of volunteering with them to access something in the community. So we developed over the years and when we first set up, we were basically a hundred percent land funders. And in about ten, eight, nine years ago, we started to, you know, how sustainable that was in the future and started to develop as an income stream and that was just to make us a little bit more sustainable and also looking at needs and feedback from parents and parents was that there's a little bit of a gap in the community for people with a learning disability to access a service, that does save you a service for individual support service. So this has been fantastic for the organisations out there, but we were very careful about moving with what was needed. So we set up our, we support individual support service and daily service. But so just to go further up again, what we did do when we first set up was set up a lot of social groups and after talking with members and we kind of developed activities and projects around what members wanted and needed. So we developed sports groups and since then we've got arts and crafts. We've worked with lots of other organisations and communities to kind of provide more opportunities. We're also on a steering group for Hextall, which is fantastic. To see Hextall again and be, you know, feeling all in health. And the gateway is alongside in partnership with Hextall, just shows kind of what a strength this community has. We also work with the natural ability as well. I think the real strength of this community in West North Funderland is about working together and not about competing. And again, there's a big cross over with our members and the volunteers at Hextall. It's just what you want to kind of understand that that kind of is a real strength in West North Funderland. The funders actually really appreciate that because funders have spoken to me and thought it was great for you, organisations with learning disabilities in West North Funderland. But then, you know, the little bit of, yeah, we're more different and what we provide is something really different. What we are is social level and living, sorts of helping with members, you know, friendships, developing groups, we've got a performing arts, we've won tonight. If you can look at the photos, you can see, I'm sorry, I haven't got the website down as well, so you can't see the photos on the website. But it's kind of, very actually very like what Hextall would say, it's not about what we think we should develop as well, what the members want, what anyone wants to do, you know. We've got some lovely stories over the years, we've got a disability football team that plays competitively in Ruth Castle. And one of our lads that plays, his brother used to play in the Hextall football team. His dad always sponsored him and then I ever thought he'd have the chance to sponsor his other son who has autism. And when the chance came, looked at, actually we need a sponsor and his dad was able to sponsor his other son. It's really, really, really impacted on the family and that was just such a, you know, a huge thing for that family that they can sponsor both sons to play football for their, for their teams. So kind of where we are now, we have a gateway to nature project, again, that came about once or two, kind of two things. My nature, so we've got some lions just outside of Hexham. And we've got chickens and we've got vegetables and we're working with Hexham Blue Rock Bushes and it's all about, you know, just being able to grow their own vegetables and have that experience. We've also got our social groups where members can meet their friends. We've got the performing arts, we've got creative arts, if I missed anything. So again, we've got the two streams, we've got our earned income, which is now our daily service and individual support and that provides sustainability to Gateway to Community, provides about seventy percent of our income. And that provides a service for about thirty percent of our membership. So about seventy percent of our membership is all, they all access activities and opportunities that are grant funded. So it just kind of shows that actually it's something that a lot of people in the community like getting a little kind of social care funding and it's all about getting grants in and trying to make those homes sustainable by getting grants in. So it's really very hard still to get grants but also that that balance of trying to be sustainable as well. I'm not sure if there's anything else that's.
Okay, is any questions? John, where are you? Are you going to ask the question?
No.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. And Julia, it's just age range, as we do it, to sort of explain the age range.
Yeah, so we work from fourteen to fifteen onwards, so we're supporting young people from trial. We thought it was a really good idea to work with some six formers to help with transition into adulthood and then also that kind of transition into some of our services. And again, into Hextall and into opportunities out there, so.
I mean, just, no, just from my life, I used to cover for foureen and that transition from children's service and adult toward it and, you know, and seeing the likes of Gateway, which hopefully we're going to get into. You know, it's a step in the sort of like all the youth clubs and things that your children, you know, that, other children, baby go to football and doing all that sport and having games and friendship groups. You know, your, your organisation allows organised friendship groups to grow and organised events and stuff.
Absolutely. I feel really passionate, you know, as a mother myself, I've got children and I just feel so passionate that our members have those equal opportunities to, you know, make this happen, access to, you know, the football, the sports, you know, the visual, that kind of thing. It is something that I'm really passionate about.
Yeah. Ah, yeah, thanks for that. That was really interesting. Two questions. One is what's your biggest challenge?
The biggest challenge now is always the funding, is to always ensure that we get the department funding and to make sure that we can kind of move forward. Yes, we do have seventy percent of our income that is good, but that thirty percent, including core, is all grant funded. So the funding is kind of one of the biggest challenges. There's no challenges with regards to referrals or having people, reaching people, especially in West North Funderland, but it would, and that's a big, it's a big for us and parents and people talking to each other. So, you know, there's no shortage of new members coming in, it's just all about funding. Sorry, I was also going to explain about in two thousand and seventeen, we developed further and we got our own building. So we, we got a new building which used to be North Funderland College, we hired the Prince Hall and I mean, that has opened up so much for us. We used to go out to church halls, you know, in the groups and things, but this is something that we have our base. We've got a window which is a little bit of a, you know, home to the community. So anybody can see us, we're going to get more visible now. So, yeah.
I think you might ask my second question, my second question, what would you like to say from the Hextall Town Council?
Yeah, again, we're not very good at shouting about what we do, we're not very good at advertising what we do. So I think just kind of profile it now, but again, fun to do, you know, working together. And they really know the projects, we work with Hextall, we really know the type of projects that people do. But, you know, they just get a hold of them and we're going to that.
It couldn't be a little bus station, right?
It's probably just a few toilets, maybe.
Somebody came into us today to use our toilet, not a big toilet, but you know, there has been a couple of people in need and, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Julia. Is anybody else, anybody got more questions? You know, this is something that's really close to my heart, you know, the special needs for people and it's, you know, I've been pretty close to Hextall over the years and, you know, I know Chris. I mean, I think Hextall's a sponsor, that it's lasted fifteen years and it's still going from strength to strength. But also, there's also many other groups out there, other groups I would love to invite tonight, but obviously we just picked the two, so I've got, you know, I suggested these two. And I just, unless you've actually got children who are affected by this, you pass these things every day and you don't know that they, you know, they're just hidden in folk and plain sight. And until, until you actually get to see this and they use this as a platform to actually explain what's actually going on, it's really interesting to see how much strong support that this town provides that, you know, could easily not be here.
Yeah, we're going to talk to two hundred people in a year, so we're sure we still don't like, there's no age difference. From fourteen people, you're going to two, um, you know.
And it is, it's when just once the schooling, formal schooling ends, you know, it becomes very worrisome as to where next.
Yes, yes.
Is a rule from, from elder schooling in adulthood.
Yeah.
The, the, the system is very different, you know, of what's actually going to gain them and give them, you know, that reason for living and that reason for getting on the road.
Because all those reasons, statues, all those, it's in the, the homes and, yeah, charities, yeah.
Good, anybody else? Well, thank you, Julia, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I've got a moment with you here, if anyone wants to have a look at the handbooks rounds.
Thank you.
I've got some leaflets, yeah. Shall I just leave them for people to help themselves at the end? Oh, they're good.
Good, well, I hope everybody enjoyed that and thank you for your attendance. This is something that's close to me as well, just wanted to, what at least one of the townspeople to focus a bit, focus on these open times, it's really interesting also. Right, so we're going to eight two eight, we're going to thank you all, thank you. We're going to eight and eight now, which is mayor's announcement, so a busy month this month. And so just the highlights, I had a, I had a meeting with the Forum Cinema. Very interesting just about their, obviously they're moving out of Covid, the cinema now being reopened again. I had New Game Bond as a sort of like the first movie to, to bring them out of lockdown and such. That's gone pretty well, probably, it's probably the best movie you could have chosen actually as a franchise to actually get them moving again. The set has been pretty successful, but obviously, I mean, I would say what they've done is they're keeping social distancing so some seats are still out of their commission while the cinema is on, while the movie is on. But we're talking about funding, et cetera, so they've got some challenges ahead. But, you know, obviously to, to really do it in our current performance cinema, we, you know, we want to keep that cool. Spook Night, so I was about to, Joaquin, a few others, that was just fun, it was just great fun. Hugely entertaining. I thought Spook Night was absolutely amazing and the numbers of people who actually turned up, it was absolutely massive. And I think the one thing that really got me was the engagement of people, so not only the children, you know, getting dressed up and, you know, looking great and really getting engaged in it, but it was also the adults who actually got dressed up as well. I mean, it was just sort of start and effort that went into, to, to, to that, so that's great. I did pop along to see the Tyndale Tree, Alison Smith's, the Tyndale Tree, how was that getting on, Alison?
That's been a little upset, yeah. It's been well dressed over the weekend and, yeah, people still like to do it, so we've got, hope this week goes well.
Great, excellent stuff. We also, we won a green flag award for the cemetery, which is, is that our fourth? Fourth, fourth in succession, so, yeah, so that's really positive. And I also was invited to the community centre luncheon club and I was offered lunch but I deferred. I thought I'd leave it to them, but I did pour the tea, which was very, very good. I fully enjoyed it. And that was really nice because it aimed at those who were socially isolated, you know, maybe they've lost their honour, you know, they're living on their own and that paid off. Probably have lunch, a couple of hours of friendship and, you know, game of dominoes and all sorts of stuff and, yeah, that's nice. So that's great. Rand, right, number nine is our account stop payment. Any questions on the account stop payment? No? Oh, sorry, Chip.
Yeah, I just, I just noticed that we lease a number of vehicles and if we're leasing them, I wonder if it's worth investigating electric vehicles, possibly something to talk about finance and general purposes, if you know. Is this a lot going on? Is there a lot going on these days?
I think it's a really good point. Really good point. We'll bring out one of those things definitely. Good. Anyone else? Right. The next item is to consider the consultation of the county council's statement of licensing policy. Any comments on that? Very good. Right. We shall make, we'll have more comment to that. The next item was to agree to re-adopt the grant aid policy, which is enclosed on page eleven. Obviously, our grant aid policy is sort of, you know, we've always had a grant aid policy. Just give some clarity on what is included, what is excluded. Is everybody content that that fits with our aid objectives? The next one is annually, we have to do a financial risk assessment, which is on page fifteen, sixteen and onwards. Fifteen, sixteen and onwards. Is there any questions on that? This is quite a mature document. Okay, annually we see that. Right. The next item is to note the draft minutes of all our committees held in October. So that's... Does anybody, can you hear the chairs, committee engagement? Does anything you want to raise, please? Something specific? John, is there anything on planning infrastructure and everything?
I don't particularly want to raise anything yet.
Oh, yes, you do. Yes, you do. Yes, you do. And the finance and general purposes, is anything in particular? Good. Flying through this bit. Right. So the next thing is to look at correspondents.
Thank you. Correspondents, council has big circulated information on Nalky News, Can In Use, BCS Support Services Evolutins, the Northumberland CVA Support Services Evolutin, Information Justice Week and Questionnaire on Volunteering, County Council Funding Evolutin, temporary chapit regulation orders related to Elensgate Terrorists and Plingsgate Terrorists and Gilesgate, Health Watch Northumberland AGM, the CPRB webinar on housing design in rural Northumberland, Statement of Licensing Policy Consultation, the playlist for life, the music and dementia charity and their free resources, Rosie's Call newsletter, the Time Valley Express, which is the Royal Northern Enterprise Award for Best Regional Business News Publication, and also a thank you from local residents for the kindness of staff regarding their daughter's recent bearing.
Okay, that's good. Right. So we now come to our final matters. So I've had a number of urgent matters. So I think Penny, will you do it first?
Yes, yes. I guess I'm up with that. That's all right. So for some time now, we've been thinking of a project called Grow Hexham. And it came out of the North of Time Mayor's office that is actually funding projects that have zero carbon, zero food waste at their heart. So the town council have come up with a project which is trying to match gardens with idle gardens. Who actually have a seed bank, a plant swap, having a tool landscape so that we actually repair tools rather than buy new ones. And any food that is produced as a result of this project will be obviously shared between the gardener and the host. But any surplus will go to the community grocery, which is basically the fresh food bank. So our ambition is to set up what is basically a circular economy. And so we're not involving anybody outside. This is just Hexham servicing its own needs. So where we're up to at the moment, and it's been quite a long process, but where we're up to at the moment is that the project's been validated. I've done, I'm working with the grant scheme providers, if you like. So it's called Space Hive. And basically, we're crowdfunding. And what happens is that we did a soft launch to start with, where people just informally talk to each other. And we're partners in this. But we've now launched it on Facebook. So please look at Hexham Town Council Facebook. Thank you very much to Sue for helping with that. And share it everywhere because we do have a deadline and we have a particular ambition. And this is where it gets quite complicated. So Space Hive works with the North of Time Mayor's authority. And on about the twentieth of November, the North of Time office will scrutinise the projects that have been fundraising so far. And if we can demonstrate, first of all, that we're legal, and we are, so that's fine. Secondly, that we hit the, that we actually hit that ambition of zero carbon, zero food waste. But critically, that we demonstrate support. And we demonstrate support through raising some money. And so if we fulfil those criteria, they can fund up to seventy-five percent of this project. So it's so important that we all get behind this. And it can be people making donations of like five pounds because it demonstrates support. It is about the money, but it's not only about the money. It's about this community saying this is a really important project. And I think it's a really important project because potentially, under that umbrella, we can work to the benefit of the town with people like Transition Time Vale, with the, we could help to clear the backlog of allotment waiting lists. You know, we could produce more food for people who need. There's all sorts of benefits that actually can spread further than this single project. And so I think it's really important that we get behind it. So please, I'm appealing to you to donate. And I've handed out the leaflet to everybody with details. You just go on the Space Hive or go on our Facebook page, donate. But please can you circulate it through your networks as fast as you can and as widely as you can. And so I will be talking to Hexham TV on Wednesday. I want to put an article in the front for the following week. So I'm trying to build and maintain a momentum towards this deadline of around the twentieth of November. Because if we get that seventy-five percent, we've already got fifteen percent of what we need, then we're laughing because we've got till the sixteenth of December to fill in those gaps. So we need a push now. So I know that a lot of councillors have known that this is going on, but it's actually real now. It's gone, it's absolutely gone live. And please spread this as widely as you can through all your networks. So thank you.
Would you like to see how much you've got so far, what your target is?
Yes, the target is eight thousand and eighty-seven pounds. And that's because we want to employ a coordinator. I think what a lot of projects suffer from is the fact that if you're working with volunteers only, they can't devote the time and also you don't get that continuity that you need. And so, you know, it's quite a portion of that is to employ a coordinator for three hundred hours. And we would like to have a shed in the east and a shed in the west. And we put in a bid for tools, cement and tools. So this can be a whole go project that extends back to the town. And so we've raised whatever fifteen percent is because somebody's just put a bid in. It's over one thousand. I could check actually. Yeah. So we have raised some money.
So about fifteen hundred pounds if it is.
Not quite, not quite. But we're going that way. So. So I'm going to be back to asking you about the project.
I'm just trying to get my head around it. If you were to trade the eight thousand through the town funding, would you not need the North of Time funding as well? Or would that imply what's already been committed?
No. What happens is that they will take a snapshot and see how much we raised. And then they will decide what they want to fund. And it might be that they fund, say we do raise twenty-five percent by the twentieth of November. Then they may decide that they're going to give us that seventy-five percent. And in which case, we've raised what we need. But we can over-fundraise as well. The critical thing is that we can't under-fundraise. So if we don't reach our target, we don't get anything at all. It's not, it's not an addition to this. We'd be seventy-five percent of like eight thousand.
Brilliant. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
John, I think you were...
Yes, Minister. Yes, I'd like to bring to the council's, the town council's attention the county council initiative, which I think is a significant step forward in helping us tackle the effects of climate change and global warming. The county council has produced an action plan explaining how it intends to get the whole of Northumberland to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. And it's making progress on that. But it realises, the county council realises and has acknowledged that it's not going to achieve the whole of the goal of getting carbon neutral by twenty thirty simply by working on it so on. It has to involve communities, the towns and the parishes across the county. And this is where the initiative comes in. They're hoping to work with existing climate action groups in Hexham and see the town council as being, I'm sorry about the name, the climate champion. I think we could have thought of a better name, but never mind, that's what we've got. It sees the town council as being the climate champion, which would coordinate, be a point of reference and contact, and be a conduit through which information and support can be sent back and forth between the climate action groups and the county council. And if the climate action groups in Hexham work with us, we can be part of the drive with the county council to lower carbon emissions in transport, to decrease reliance on fossil fuels, encourage biodiversity and eliminate waste. Brilliant goals. And they're looking to people, to grassroots people to work with. And they want to work through us, the town council, to be the climate champion, to lead on this. And for me, this is a very exciting project. And I hope that the climate action groups will feel the same and be willing to work on this coordinated approach. And Arianna and I, we attended the first training session just last Thursday, Thursday the fourth. And I don't want to speak for her. But we were quite taken with this. We thought this was an excellent project. But it's not something that just the two of us can do. And that's not how it's meant to be. It's meant to be the whole of the town council. And many people on this council got into politics, local politics in the first place because of the green credentials and the green concerns. So I'm sure some of you will be very disappointed if you couldn't be involved in this project. So I'm proposing that those of us who can form a working party to lead on this. I know it'll be another commitment on top of the committee work that you already do. But members, if it's a working party, you'll be able to opt in and opt out. There'll be no need to turn about a week, week after week and so on. You'll be able to come along as particular topics are discussed and acted upon. That's the important bit, acted upon, not just talking shop. We've got to be active here and do things. It would be good to have a representative from each of the committees, at least one representative from each of the committees. So it helps with the coordinated approach. And I hope that you're as excited about this as anyone. Does anyone have any questions that we'd like to ask?
Yeah, I was going to say, just to emphasise that although this is for the whole council to take part as much as they want in it, we also are hoping that the residents of Hexham want to be part, active part of it. And we are so lucky in Hexham, the fact that we have so many experts, especially in the field of biodiversity and sustainability. So we will be drawing on all those experienced people, but also expecting and hoping that lots of other people want to take part. And we have to coordinate that.
Yes. Thank you for adding that. It's very important. Yes, obviously, there's going to be, sort of, this affects everything and everyone. And my first thought is about the, we're surrounded by agriculture. And a lot of that is sprayed and the biodiversity catastrophe that is unfolding. So it'd be fantastic to include, obviously, as many people as possible. But just the first thought that comes to me is people that work in agriculture farms. Well, cycling, trees. It's a long list. Yes, action, actually, is what we want.
Chip, I suppose, from that point of view, it's very, very useful. I mean, we don't really have that many farms within Hexham. There are a few, but many. So from that point of view, it is very useful that this is a Northumberland County Council initiative. Because hopefully, they will be able to link us with our neighbours and our other communities with similar and come up together with some plan of changing things. I know, for example, on another spectrum, say, Time Vale's trust is really in really good communication with farmers along the, along the roads. Working with them to change their, you know, what they can do for environment. So I think there's, knowing that Northumberland County Council is now involved a lot more is going to help. It's going to be a way forward.
This is a constantly step forward, I think, because the town council have been saying, we want to do this, we want to do that. And there have been times the county council have just ignored us so, said no. Now they're asking us and the climate action groups for their action plans with the idea that they're going to help us put them into practice. She's brilliant. The world has turned.
Yeah, I really welcome this actually because so much work has been going on. But like I said earlier, when I was talking about Grow Hexham, that a lot of it's happening in separate pockets. And I think we have to be careful that we don't actually, you know, sort of sanitise or restrict people in what their ambitions are. But the fact that we can give voice to those ambitions and hopefully support them in that. Because it's huge what's been happening over the years of locally, in terms of climate. And I'm really welcome, really welcome.
Sorry, John. Yeah, just thinking about the twenty mile an hour limit thing. I mean, surely that should feed into that in terms of if the traffic's calm around Hexham, that should encourage cycling as well, pedestrians, like we're talking about in the end of October. So hopefully, Derek, that should give some clout to that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
If we can feed that in.
Yeah. To me, I just think, I think, well, for me, you know, whether we go for a new committee or not, to me, I think it's just, it's like a golden thread that has to go through. Everything, you know, whether it be finance and general purposes, whether it be community engagement, whether it be planning and infrastructure, it's actually just look at golden threads. I don't, I don't think it's like, sustainable development, in the little days, it doesn't work like that. Like, to me, that things that run through, you have to make sure that all those things are, quite rightly, the council is actually thinking. Actually, twenty minute hour, yeah, it's about safety, but actually, what's a spinner from that? You know, the safety could be that actually more walking and cycling could occur which then not going to affect the, you know, the climate.
Absolutely appreciate you run through everything. I think it could be helpful to have a group of us just really clarify what the priorities are. Perhaps what's already... Perhaps what's already been suggested, focusing on that as the short term, let's get these things done, or something like that.
But that's why we need the working party.
Yeah, exactly.
Who we're going to work with, and so on, carry on forward.
Well, John, is everyone content?
At one point, I mentioned in the training for funding, and I didn't get a clear response. But that's not to say that we wouldn't get any. And watch this space, let's hope so. I don't see why not.
And I would also, just, you know, just from the experience of working with the committee and the town parish councils is is a lot of parish and town councils who just sit back. And if you, you know, I think, see, we're a very progressive council, want to do things. And we will be first, and if you want, I guarantee that, because of less distance, just sit and just be, as opposed to actually sit and do.
If I could just say two things. Second one, because I'm finished now. With Arianna and I listened to, I think there were 16 other people from up and down the county. And they were explaining what they were doing, or what they were, oh, they were going to do. And I thought, we've done that. Oh, yes. There was, I think we are ahead of the game.
Yes.
But the other thing that I wanted to say was that there were people there from Herden Bridge, from Ayrton? And from Stockfield. And I thought, this is great, the time, how did we cover this here? And we can, we can work together as well.
Lovely.
Very exciting, I'd love to be involved. And I think it's a real opportunity for us to lead the way on it. But also just to preach the progress here, but how climate justice is a really explicit thread that runs through it. And that obviously climate change proportionately affects certain communities more than others, even within the wider Hecton community. But yeah, very exciting.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, it was just a reference to what Derek said really about the thread running through. Because the other thread that needs to run through is our policy on sustainability and biodiversity. So I think that having passed that's really important. And that we have to bear that in mind, that actually if we're passing those sorts of policies, that they become a reference point to everything that we do. And that's a very useful tool, I think.
Just to finish it, so if it's okay, I'll send round an email to the volunteers to join us. And it'll be up to everyone all the time anyway, to initially kick it off.
Yeah, and then if you could have a little bit of change, just to see how we can just do it structurally, just as in structure, how we structure the organisation and that.
Yeah, that's the agenda for tomorrow, yeah.
And right, so finally, Suzanne?
Yeah, yes, finally, not entirely unrelated, just a promo for Hecton Morgue's litter pick this Saturday. It's the community led litter meeting I've been doing, so it's our third one now, it's been really popular. We'll work with Service Against Sewage, and we've worked with the Town of Lysgill onto one of them. And so, yeah, so we're going to be at the Queen Elizabeth High School on Saturday, 11 until 1, doing a litter pick there. And they've been incredibly well attended, we've done clinical research and things. So then we feed back to MCC as to where the hotspots are for litter. So that's helpful. So we'll say, you know, obviously the rest bins outside the hospital, especially in different areas that were of concern. So just to say, anyone is welcome to come along, Queen Elizabeth High School on Saturday, 11.
And I'll just, I'll just finish off and just say, so we've got busy time coming up in Hecton. So remember it's Sunday, what's this, Sunday, on the 14th of November. For councillors as well, if they're interested, on the Saturday, the 13th, there is a populating war grades in the cemetery, that's got to 10:15. That's on this, that's the Saturday, the 13th. The lantern parade organised by, that's Hexham, obviously, the lantern parade, isn't it? That's the 19th, parade of the 19th. So bring your lanterns. And then the fantastic Christmas lights which on is on the 26th of November. I need to speak to someone, I've probably got to remember the date. And the Abbey candlelight procession on the 28th of November. And then the Christmas market on the 11th of December, but maybe we'll be moving on.
On the Christmas lights which on is also late night shopping.
Yes, yes, late night shopping, all sorts of things. All good, right, Fayland for one penny?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you the update because I just looked on the site. So so far, £1,127 has been finished. So, yeah, thank you very much.
That's excellent. Okay, well, thank you so much, really good evening tonight, so thank you. I think, I think Arianna's taking us all for drinks now. Well, thank you all.